Well, since it's a nice day and this is everybody, it looks like we've got a quorum, so we'll go ahead and start. Call is to order, and the roll call is all trustees who are not present are trustee Beers, trustee Wake, trustee McDonald.
Decker.
And who?
Decker.
Oh, and trustee Decker. Sorry. You were saying, "Decker." It's like, no, he's right there. Is this me doing that? Okay, so if we go ahead and stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And so item number three on the agenda is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Are there any requests from trustees to change the order of the agenda or to make any changes to them? Seeing none, then we'll move forward in the order in which the agenda has been established. Item number four A is to approve the Board of Trustees' special meeting on June 26, which is found on page four. Are there any corrections to those minutes? I wasn't there, sorry. Yes, what correction?
Is this on? Okay. So, since a lot of this is about me, you know, what I said, I was just wondering if one sentence could be taken out, because it says she has seen both the motivated and unmotivated students at Big Sky High School. In that case, I wasn't talking about when I've seen a Big Sky, I was talking about my own kids, and so if that actually should be removed, it just, it's not, it doesn't, I don't think we have.
How about at the end of the meeting, you and I can figure out.
Okay. Okay. That works for me.
Because it's one more paragraph. Okay. Would that change meeting? I don't know if it changes.
So I have to mention this to Lenora, I'm not listed as present in this one. And then, under the roll call, it has Bragstad instead of me. I read the minutes, I like doing that, sorry.
comments that falls within the scope of what the district deals with on any day-to-day or more global basis, and so if you can just come to the podium and state your name, and if you represent an organization, let us know who it is. And it's a pretty light crowd here, so we don't have to really stick to a three-minute presentation, but if we can keep it somewhat brief.
I'll keep it close. Eric Hulteng, H-U-L-T-E-N-G. This is, and I've had you in mind, Mike, since our last meeting. You asked for some comments on different aspects of this whole process, and so I've put together some, I think, pretty fun information. So, Madam Chair.
If you can explain for some people who aren't as familiar with our new trustee as to what are you, what you do for the district, in that case that...
Right here.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
This is Madam Chair, members of the Board of Trustees, of MCPs, Superintendent Thane, and the community of Missoula, and the administrators. My name is Eric Hulteng, and I'm one of the principals of Hulteng CCM Incorporated. We were engaged by the Missoula County Schools to function as your owner's construction representative for the duration of your Smart School 2020 Bond Project, beginning for us in July of 2015, so it's been kind of a long stretch here, three years. For those here this evening and who may be unfamiliar with the role of an owner's construction representative, it is our job to use our deep industry knowledge and experience to manage large, complex construction projects from planning through completion, representing the highest and best interests of the owners throughout, in this case, Missoula County Public Schools. This is a multi, your multifaceted bond project, it represents a significant investment in the education of your children by the citizens of the city. It also represents an enormous investment of time by numerous individuals and representatives of MCPs. For the past two and a half years, many throughout the district and community have spent countless hours reviewing requests for qualifications, requests for proposals, have faithfully participated in numerous interviews and presentations, and selflessly devoted their time, talents, and efforts through an arduous process. This process began with the award for architectural services for the Franklin and Lowell Projects back in September of 2015, nearly three years ago, and this evening the process will conclude with the award of the final G C, General Contractor Construction Manager, Jackson Contractor Group. The board will vote on that later today, this evening. And although this wraps up the award process for the design and construction, there's still a substantial amount of work yet to complete. I remember hearing a comment after the last interview was, "Boy, we're done with that." Well, we still have three years to go. The architectural selection process consisted of requests for qualifications, followed by the firm's presentation and interviews. The General Contractor Construction Manager selection process consisted of requests for qualifications, requests for proposals, culminating in a presentation and interview. So, for the architectural RFQ submittals, through this course of this project, we've received 72 submittals, reviewed by 80 committee members, and they've committed approximately 400 hours of time just for, just to get the architects to the interview process. And then, once we got to the interview process, we interviewed 46 firms, and there was 50 committee members involved, and that was about 400 hours as well. We get to the GCCM, which is General Contractors Construction Manager, the request for qualifications. We received 87 different submittals over the, for all the projects we led, and we've had 84 committee members and 523 hours we've spent reviewing the GCCM RFQs. For the request for proposals for the GCCMs, we received 82, and we had 84 committee members review those, about 741 hours is what the time people have devoted to reviewing those. At the interview process, we interviewed 55 contractors, and there was 84 committee members and 488 hours approximately is what we spent on those. And subsequent to the design awards, the, each school convened an EIT committee to help through the design process. So, there was 184 EIT meetings so far. Yes, EIT. Education Innovation Teams, yes. So there's 184 meetings to date with about 302 members, and that includes staff and, you know, teachers, principals, and some, and some of the ERDs and things, so. And that's about 2,500 hours so far, and there's still, we're still doing those, and so it's a substantial amount of time. So the totals, we had 342, we received 342 responses to our architects and engineers and contractors. We utilized 684 committee members throughout this, and that's about 5,000 hours of time that people have spent so far, so which is, that's pretty, that's a pretty substantial amount of time. The alternative process, delivery process has proven to be beneficial to Missoula County Public Schools as the selection of each firm and construction manager was based on the best value approach, and furthermore, the awards have been equitably delivered across a full spectrum of design and construction firms. For design firms, CTA has received awards for four projects. LP, LaRue Page Warner out of Great Falls received three awards. JCM locally, it was three awards. A&amp;E Architects, three awards. MMW received two. Paradigm Architects received two, and Dowling Studio Architects received two. And there's a substantial amount of technology, safety, roofing, and deferred maintenance projects that were just too humorous to list here. Ray's been involved in many of those, thanks, and Hatton previous to that, so that's for roofing and deferred maintenance, boiler work, things like that, that, like I say, this would be too long to list here. For the construction side, Jackson Contractor Group has received so far three awards. Mark Cobos is here tonight, hopefully the board votes favorably for you. And Dick Anderson Construction has received three. Sletton Construction has received three. Sirius Construction has received three. Langless and Associates received two. Western Interstate has received two awards, Wadsworth one, and Swank one, and then there's multiple technology, security, roofing, and deferred maintenance projects as well. So you can see they're very well spread across, you know, very evenly distributed across your community. Once all the projects are bid out, we'll have some more statistics on, for instance, we'll use Jackson as an example, even though Jackson gets a $10 million contract, you know, 90% of that's probably subcontracted, so that would be $9 million in subcontracts, and we're going to figure out Missoula subcontractors versus regional, and you're going to see how many are really Missoula contractors and are benefiting from this whole bond project. And that's, we went through this in Great Falls, and doing this in Helena as well, and it's interesting that, you know, some of the comments you hear are like, "Oh, those out-of-towners and things," well, there's a lot of people in Missoula benefiting, this is a great deal, so. I want to give a special shout-out to Burley for, Burley Williams, for feeding the committees and through the interviews and all these processes, and I figure we have about 312 lunches served, and that's about 234,000 calories we consumed, so. And I would like to publicly acknowledge Superintendent Thane, Pat, and Burley, as you guys were involved in each and every selection, for all the architects and all the contractors, you devoted all your time and efforts, and that's a lot of work given your, your normal duties as well, so I'd like to give you guys a hand, so. Also acknowledge many of the board members that have participated, some multiple times, and both current and past, school principals and ERDs who have enthusiastically participated in the selection process. Today marks a major milestone in the Smart School 2020 Project. This evening we'll be voting on awarding the final contract for construction for CS Porter Middle School. And while this concludes the selection process for both architects and contractors, there remains yet a substantial amount of work to be completed in order to fulfill the requirements of the bond language. Over the past 16 years, our firm has had the privilege of working with school districts across Montana, Missoula, Billings, Helena, Great Falls, Hamilton, Columbus, Glasgow, plus numerous independent districts and private schools. While each has embraced the core competencies of 21st century learning, I've also observed that the 21st century learning experience can be modeled uniquely in ways that best serve the individual communities. It's about educating students for the world in which we live, certainly, but it's also about providing a wide array of services to and educating the broader community. It's our honor to work with the exceptional team at MCPs, as well as those community and school volunteers who have selflessly participated in this project. We look forward to working with you the next three years to complete this process in delivering the highest value and quality in educational environments to the students, teachers, administrations, and the citizens of the district. Erin Nostrand's here today, she is one of our engineers, and she's been so valuable to our team. Tyson Watson is also a valuable member of our team, so thanks for coming tonight. I didn't expect them to show up, but I appreciate that you did. So thank you all for your time, appreciate everything, you're a great group of people, and couldn't be happier to be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. We can't make public, oh, you can make public comments.
Yeah, I'm just going to make a public comment. I would like to acknowledge that Tyson Watson and Erin Nostrand are both MCPs graduates.
Well, great. Well, thank you. Is there any other public comment on any non-agenda item?
Can we get Eric's comments in writing, so we have the...
We will. We should put him on Facebook.
Put him on Facebook. Often, people who do public comment do provide a written summary of their statements for later, so if that's something you're willing to do, that would be great. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that suggestion. So now we'll move on to, there was no written correspondence, so we move on to six A, which is the high school activities report. It's the spring and year-end report, 2017-2018. It's found on page 11. There will not be any oral report, so we move on to B, which is a...
Can I add one oral comment?
Okay, so there will be an oral comment.
I would like to make an addition to page 11. At the time this was created, we did not have participation numbers from Sealy Swan for spring activities. We received them subsequent to publishing the packet. So the very bottom portion of the page should represent 27 Sealy students participated in track. One Sealy student participated in tennis, so a total of 28. There were $1,560 in fees paid by Sealy students for spring sports, and there were $120 in fee waivers. The additional information for Sealy throughout the remainder of the report is accurate.
And so, just as trustee Lorenzen indicated, can we amend the attachments for what is posted on the website to include that?
Certainly can.
Okay, thanks. Now we move on to announcement, oh, that was a public comment on A. Now we move on to announcements from Superintendent Thane.
Thank you. Be brief this evening. There. Our announcements contained on page 14 of the packet, and would just like to highlight one in particular. We had a regularly scheduled board meeting on the calendar for Tuesday, July 24, and we will cancel that, so we will not have a second meeting in July. I would also indicate that contained in the packet immediately after the superintendent's report on page 15 is a one-page executive summary of the Zero Waste Committee document, and that was omitted from the last board packet, so it's there for your review. I would also indicate that, again, yesterday we had 25 teachers, and today we had 17 teachers engaged in summer PIR activity related to English Language Arts and preparing for fall, and again, we appreciate those teachers taking the advantage of summer professional learning opportunities. Next week, we will have 35 MCPs high school students who will participate in an experience at the Global Leadership Institute at the University of Montana, and it will be sponsored by MCPs along with U of M as a partner, and the facilitators will be MCPs high school teachers. I would also indicate we've got some students that are busy this summer. We have over 100 high school students engaged in credit recovery programs at the three urban high schools and Willard, and again, those students who find themselves credit deficient or who had a failing grade and, of course, have an opportunity to recover that credit through the Montana Digital Academy, and they are supported by MCPs staff primarily through our Title I programs, so that they can recover those credits over the summer and get back on track. So we appreciate those students and the staff who are engaged in that process currently. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any announcements from trustees? I have just one. Superintendent Thane and I have been discussing what the schedule looks like in August for board meetings, and of course, the way the budget adoption works, the board, the second board meeting of the month is too late to approve the budget because it has to be approved by statute...
The 25th.
The 25th?
At the latest, and then the meeting starts by the 25th.
Right, and so, and it won't be ready for our review at the first meeting of the month, so there is some discussion that we would possibly cancel the second meeting of the month as a regular board meeting and add in a special board meeting on Thursday, the 23rd. So if there's any other items that we need to address in August, we could, but that way we can adopt the budget and fall within statutory constraints. So I just wanted to give everyone a tentative heads-up, because I know things get pretty busy, end of summer, planning for school and things like that, so is that okay?
We'll work on that coming up.
Yeah, so it's not for sure yet, but it's just something that, because of the timeframe that the budget needs to be adopted by, it kind of creates a little bit of a, I guess, we're between a rock and a hard place in terms of when to have the meeting to adopt the budget and also have three meetings in three weeks altogether, so just a heads-up on that. And no other announcements, so we'll move on to new business. So, A1, under Finance, Operations, and Maintenance, is the Home Vale Property Sales Discussion. This is a continued discussion by Superintendent Thane and Pat, and so if you want to walk us through what this additional information is about?
Certainly, and I'll just give a brief introduction. Again, we discussed at the last meeting the potential for the trustees to consider submitting requests, or requesting requests for proposals from those who might be interested in the Home Vale property, which is located immediately to our north across South Avenue, and that we would look to do a couple things. Number one, get an appraisal of the property, and number two, bring forward a draft resolution that would potentially lead to the board taking action to determine whether or not they wish to sell the property. There was discussion at that time that it seemed like a pretty accelerated timeline, and we certainly agree that we want to make sure that we keep this in front of the public and that we allow adequate time. So, we're bringing it back tonight. Pat's prepared a draft of the resolution. We're not asking for action at this point in time, but want to give trustees the opportunity to review it, to ask questions about it, that we could then consider before bringing a resolution before the trustees. I would suggest that we would likely not bring that resolution before the trustees until we have an appraisal or at least a firm date for an appraisal, but we, again, want to keep this in front of the public eye and want to keep the process moving. So with that, I'd ask Pat to talk about the resolution.
Thank you. So, the resolution's on page 16. The significance of the resolution, as with most resolutions or all resolutions, is that this is adopted by the Board of Trustees, and so the sale in accordance with this resolution would be at the discretion of the trustees. And a piece to the resolution found under the second recital, the second whereas clause, reflects a statement that the property has never been used as a school or used for school purposes, and we've owned it since 1977 or thereabouts, and that the property is unsuitable for school purposes of the district, which is the language that we talked about last time, that's, that's part of the statute. What, what we would be looking at doing with the proceeds from the potential sale of this property would be investing it in property in the building that is used for school purposes. That would be the Missoula College located behind the business building. And so it's essentially proposing a piece of property that has had only ancillary school district benefit over the last 30-plus years, and translating it or transferring that into actual improvement that's used for, for school purposes. The, the other piece to the resolution includes the, the 14-day effective date, so the, once the resolution is passed, it's, it's not effective for 14 days after notice of that resolution is made. And, and then the resolution also provides for the deposit of the proceeds in the miscellaneous program fund, Fund 215, which is also a requirement of the statute that we identify the placement of those funds. In response to some questions that came out during our, the board's last discussion, the, there, I talked to our attorney, and there's no reported cases that would identify some, some reference or some guidance in terms of a finding of suitability or unsuitability or compliance with the statute. So the, the statute hasn't been interpreted by the courts in Montana. The, the property is zoned C1-4. C1 is, is commercial, neighborhood commercial, and there's a variety of listed permissible uses and conditional uses related to this type of zoning. It probably makes some sense to attach those to the, to the agenda during our next, next meeting. I wouldn't want to go through those all right now, but C1-4 is the, is the zoning designation, and would have pretty, pretty broad permissible neighborhood commercial uses, is what I would As Mark mentioned, we would be talking with an appraisal, an appraiser, and actually have a meeting set up with, with one tomorrow morning. And really, what we contemplated when we did the RFQ for real estate consulting services was consulting services, so I think that's how we'll approach the meeting tomorrow, is, is on that basis, and, and then utilizing their expertise as a, as an appraiser and also a consultant to further advise the board both as to the, the approach to take with the property, should that be, in terms of the evaluation, in terms of the appraisal, of course, we'd share that information with the board. That's it.
Questions for Superintendent Thane or Pat? Trustee Lorenzen?
I guess they're mostly money questions. So when you say consulting service for the appraisal, I mean, you'll pay them for their time and we won't be obligated to, to put them on as a, as a Realtor or as an agent?
That's right.
And then, so the money goes, it says the district's miscellaneous program fund, so my questions are, is that earmarked for high school only? Like, does each district have their own Fund 215?
Fund, it is high school, the two on the, as part of the first number represents high school. 115 would be elementary, and each school, did you say each school? I'm sorry.
Each district.
Oh, each district does have a miscellaneous program fund. So Fund 15 is our miscellaneous fund. It, it's where our revenues associated with the grants and donations and deposits, where our insurance proceeds are deposited, insurance proceeds in the event of a claim, that's the place where those funds are deposited. It has the, the most flexible place of use for trustee use.
And I guess as my other question, how do we keep it from leaking away for other uses?
It would be at your discretion. The Roosevelt sale proceeds have, have been deposited in Fund 115 Miscellaneous Program Fund since the sale, with the only use being the pay-down of the food service or the improvements to the central kitchen, the payoff of that debt, so essentially, those funds would be under the discretion of the board for how they would be used. No, we wouldn't budget those funds at all.
Any other questions for either person? Seeing none, then, before we move on to number two, I just happened to read through the minutes for both because I didn't look at them closely because I wasn't at those two meetings, but there are five words spelled wrong in there. It doesn't change the meaning at all, so okay if I hand them back to the staff to change those misspellings? I don't think we need another vote, but I just want to let you know there's some words that were misspelled. Okay? So not, no. What did you say?
And you missed them.
I did. I did. So now we're on to two, which is to approve the Northwestern Energy Ground Lease for Solar Panels, which is found, beginning on page 17 with additional documentation showing where the panels would be located, and so it looks like both of you are going to, again, explain what this is about.
Sure, I'll just do an introduction, then Pat can get into the discussion of the lease. So we've had some preliminary discussion with the trustees about a... So we've had some preliminary discussion with the trustees about a potential partnership with Northwestern Energy. And Northwestern Energy is dedicating a million dollars to research alternative energy in Missoula. And we engaged in conversation beginning about 18 months ago with Northwestern Energy to see if we could develop a plan that would allow us to essentially create an educational venture with regard to the solar panels. And the proposal that we have discussed is to locate solar panels at each of our four urban high school sites, and that those solar panels would be in somewhat unique arrays, not necessarily deployed in a traditional fashion, but we're looking to see if there are urban applications that we as a community could study that might yield information about potential further installation of solar throughout the community. The most unique proposal at this point in time is actually creating a fence of solar panels along Crosby at the Willard site. In the alternative, we could do bicycle storage with solar panels on top, and that's also contemplated as one of the alternatives at Willard. At both Hellgate and Sentinel, we're looking at ground arrays that essentially would be like a steel structure with the arrays deployed in a vertical mount. And the idea there is that you're not looking at rooftop, you're not penetrating a roof structure that might impact warranty, but you're looking at surfaces that would be, that would not be negatively impacted. We also want them to be visible to the community so that they have questions about solar. The final application at Big Sky High School that's being considered is an application that would create a covered walkway that would parallel South Avenue and would be across from Fort Missoula Regional Park. And essentially, it would provide a covered area that could also serve to protect fans who are at sub varsity competitions and soccer matches that are played over on that area of the complex at Big Sky High School. At Big Sky, there would also be battery storage capacity, which would be unique of the four proposals. The idea being we could replenish the batteries during the day and essentially have activities in either the gym or the cafeteria at Big Sky that could essentially be powered by the solar energy that's generated. Again, we're looking at educational opportunities for the community, but also for our students. And the students' educational opportunities would likely be twofold primarily. Number one being, at each array, there's discussion about creating at least a portion of the panels that could be adjusted, tweaked by students so that they could learn how different orientations of the solar panels might result in different levels of generation. And then also, similar to what we have with the Garden City Harvest Agreement, where we have a farmer in the classroom, we would look for an engineer in the classroom, and Northwestern Energy would dedicate some expertise to provide guest speakers, et cetera, also field trip opportunities, not only to solar sites, but potentially to other renewable energy sites, dams, et cetera. Wind generation is also a consideration, should that become viable in the area. Then we're also contemplating that Northwestern Energy will provide us during each of the five years of the agreement, funding for curriculum development. We want to make clear ties to the next generation science standards as we look at continued education in the STEM fields. We at Missoula County Public Schools would not directly benefit from the energy that's generated. It would go to the grid. This truly is a research project. I would have a term of five years, and at the end of those five years, we could determine whether we want to renew and continue the process, or those panels would be removed and restoration to original condition of the property. The other thing that I think's important to note is although we've talked about some proposals for locations and how the arrays might be deployed, there has not actually been a formal engineering or design development completed at this point in time. So this is a first step, really, essentially to allow you as trustees to respond to the proposal so that Northwestern Energy essentially gets affirmation of the project and our commitment to participate with them in an alternative energy study and renewable resource study here in Missoula. And given favorable review and approval by the board, then they will actually begin the process of engineering, seeking requests for proposals, and that would also entail going before the Office of Development Services in Missoula for public hearing process. I would mention that we did a round of public hearings at each of the four sites and notified the school communities and immediate neighbors, just to get them engaged in initial conversation. And we had some participation, not overwhelming amounts, but some neighbors, some school officials, and some students participated in those, and almost unanimously favorable response. I would mention that at Hellgate, we had some questions from the church because of the potential impact on the parking lot that's located on the south side of Sixth Street. We are studying a couple potential locations for the panels there, and the word from the churches, they certainly support the concepts and support our participation. They want to make certain that it doesn't negatively impact the vegetation that's growing in their parking lot if it's shaded, or that it doesn't create excessive shade that might cause icing in the winter on their parking lot. So that's part of the consideration, and we agree that we would continue the dialogue with them moving forward. So Pat, you might talk a little bit about the proposed lease.
All right. So thank you. This, as Mark mentioned, the Garden City Harvest concept, and this is really how we approached this arrangement with Northwestern Energy, whereby we looked to lease the ground, creating an arm's length third-party transaction with Northwestern Energy. Lease is the services. Both documents are attached. As Mark pointed out, the, with the lease, and very much unique with the lease, part of the property that would be leased is still not certain, and that involves the Hellgate Solar Array. So what we're asking the board to do is to approve the form of the lease and the form of the MOU, and allow the district and Northwestern Energy to refine certainly the lease in terms of the location. But the, as presented, this, the MOU and the lease has the salient terms of the understanding between the parties. Of course, critical component is the location of where the lease would be, so the description of the property. So on page 17, you'll see the lease, which intends to describe each of the properties and the location of the solar array, or actually the location of the leased space. That'll actually be left blank until we have a more firm understanding of where that would be located. And I think probably at this point, the question is at Hellgate High School. But as Mark mentioned, there's quite a process that we'll be going through to vet that location. To that end, I wouldn't anticipate any execution of the lease until we have the definitive description of the properties, which we would present and provide to the board. The, since we provided or put this document in the packet, there's been a couple of changes to the lease. Paragraph three, the last sentence there is deleted because the MOU reflected the dollars that would be conveyed to MCPS by Northwestern Energy on an annual basis to support the educational purposes. The, page, page 20, under Maintenance, under 7A, it's really important for us to have graffiti cleaned within 24 hours. We've just revised the language to say if Northwestern Energy's unable to do so, then we would do so and look to them to reimburse us for taking care of that. Really, there are some minor modifications otherwise, but by and large, that's the, the salient terms are reflected. The MOU, the, is, includes more of a, intends to be more of a fluid document in terms of educational services, and much in the same format as the Garden City Harvest arrangement, whereby we can see what works from an educational standpoint, modify the MOU, and reflect the intent of the parties to encourage and support curriculum development and education for students. The, let's see, page, page 33 reflects the commitment of Northwestern Energy to fund $5,000 per year during the term of the lease for educational purposes, field trips, curriculum development, that type of thing. I think that's all I have.
Thanks. Are there any questions? Trustee Kendall?
This is really cool, and I will support it. It sounds like a fantastic project, and I know we've heard it before. The fact that the district doesn't get any credit for the, I'm way out of my league here, for the electricity that's produced by these solar panels, was there any discussion of having some sort of, I mean, is there a reason why we're not going to get any credit for that?
The original OI group that convened to have this conversation included individuals from, I can't remember the name of the entity, but the low-income assistance programs here.
Human Resource Council.
Human Resource Council, thank you. And the discussion, and again, this will all need to be fleshed out, is that there may be credits for, to help support those people of low incomes who might be served or in need of services from Northwestern Energy. So that's all part of it. You know, there is a little bit more technical work involved in actually feeding directly to the school. So one of the elements that would be included in this is a data dashboard, a big visual flat panel display in each of the schools, that would, in essentially real time, it's within an hour, indicate how much power is being generated by the panels, and it would also track what energy is being utilized by the school, and to show that modeling for students throughout the day. One of the interesting conversations we've had is that in terms of solar generation and school use, the best time to generate solar energy in Montana, of course, is in the summer months, when school is typically not in session. Our greatest consumption, of course, is during the wintertime, when generation is probably the least. So part of this intended study would really be to look at the modeling of what is the generation versus what is the use? Would there be appropriate return on investment that schools might consider utilization of solar energy as one of the alternatives? And are there other applications, business and industry, where that modeling might more closely align? And so again, there is, I think, a great deal to be learned. We also are looking at opportunities to deploy materials other than the traditional solar arrays that we've seen. On the Willard Fence Project, we're talking about a thin film that actually is somewhat translucent, so you don't create a complete visual barrier. We felt for safety and security, you need to be able to see into those playgrounds. So that was important to us. There would also be some staggering of the panels to allow that visual aspect. We also had conversations about concerns about these being deployed at ground level on baseballs and soccer balls and things like that, potentially impacting them. And Northwestern Energy obviously recognized that, believes that's a valuable part of the study. How durable are they in residential and playground applications, et cetera? So there are a lot of things to be learned, and we've had extensive conversations over the past few months about it. And again, I'm really excited about where the conversations have gone.
Any other questions? Trustee Duggar?
I just wanted to, I'm a solar panel user. I live off the grid, and I use wind and solar with backup propane for generation. And I have to echo the same concern, even though the use is in the wintertime, I use mine in the wintertime. Battery storage is a good way to make use of what you do get and then return it to the school system, you know, when that's appropriate to do. And so I guess I still have the same burning question of why the school cannot economically benefit from. Now, I get the educational piece, and as an old teacher, I love it, I'm all for that. I think it's a great idea to co-op this project for that, for that purpose. But as a business-oriented person as well, I still think that I'm concerned about the school system not getting the benefit of the generated electricity. And there are other...
Can I interrupt you just to explain? Right now, it's just questioning.
Sure.
And so if you have questions, because statements about whether you'd support a motion or not, it sounds like this is a little bit more appropriate there.
Okay.
But I didn't know if you had any questions.
Well, that would be my question, is to gather, you know, a more, a more robust explanation as to why that can't be.
I would also add, and I neglected to with Trustee Kendall's comment, was that there also is, in all likelihood, a need for Northwestern Energy to recoup part of their million-dollar investment too, in this project, because it is a research project. And I assume that the generation of solar energy produced by the panels probably would not, in the course of the five years, cover the million-dollar investment. So I think that's all part of it, too.
Any other questions? I just have a couple, and one's somewhat procedural. You know, with the blanks that are included, for example, under one, the term, I mean, we don't know for sure what it's going to start and end, and with the changes that Pat indicated that we're making, and with, there was one other place. Oh, and then the change about being reimbursed for any graffiti that we clean. Is it, is this like a tentative approval of the lease, and then when the final, final terms are worked out, you'll bring back the completed MOU and the completed lease? So we're approving like a first step in the process?
Yes, essentially approving the form of the lease with the understanding that we would have to fill in the blanks. But again, part of our interest tonight is making sure that Northwestern Energy is confident that they have the support to move forward before they begin the engineering studies, et cetera. So it's essentially the form of the lease, giving you the opportunity to look at it. We'll come back with a finalized version.
Okay. Sure.
So my next question is, and again, this is also to gather more information, going forward, what I'd really like to understand is what the ultimate business goal of Northwestern Energy is. So that's something that, you know, if I can be better informed of what their, their future plan for this data is and how they intend to use it, and do they have plans? Is there some thought about how the school system would benefit from this in the future from an energy perspective? So.
Any other questions? I had one additional question. Is it, I didn't see that I caught it, but will there be language included that either says that MCS, MCPS may or may not be able to benefit from the credits? Or will it be some kind of statement to, so the public knows what our relationship is with the, with the credits that are being generated, so that if someone was looking at the MOU and the terms of the lease, they would be able to understand the things we were just talking about? were just talking about with Trustee Kendall's and Trustee Duggar's questions? Seems like that would be helpful. And I'd leave it to you and Pat as the attorney to decide, does that fit better in the MOU or in the lease terms? But I think that would, would be helpful.
Thank you.
So is that something that could be done?
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions in light of my question? So now, with no other questions, the recommendation is that the board approve the execution of the lease and the MOU in the form attached, with the understanding that going forward, there will be continued negotiations, and we will again see the finalized version of the lease and the MOU for final approval. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So with that as the understanding, is there a motion to approve the execution of the lease and the MOU in the form that is attached with the two changes that Pat had indicated? One which is crossing out one line, and the other one is adding in a sentence. So moved by Trustee Lorenzen, and seconded by Trustee Newbold, because I saw her first. Sorry, Trustee Smith. So now there is time for any board comments or statements about the motion? Trustee Smith?
I guess I just wanted to tie into Trustee Duggar's comments there about the benefits and whatnot, but also to point out, as Superintendent Thane pointed out, being a million-dollar project, I think if we were to ask for the electricity, the benefit of it, they may ask us to pay for the, I mean, if it was my house, I don't know how that works, if you rent your equipment or whatever, but, or if you paid for it. I honestly don't have any solar power panels, but I think that clearly the $5,000 towards the educational stuff, the, all the educational stuff that is talked, I think it's a great idea. I hope, and I assume that there will be further outreach to the people that have to live and be near these things. I know that you said it's mostly positive, there's going to be some people out there that may not like the way they look, and hopefully we can bring them on board and get them to understand the benefits of it, so, but I think it's a great idea.
Any other board comments on the motion?
Sorry. Always looking.
I know, I don't, I'm not concerned that the district doesn't get the money for the, for the electricity generated, but I'm really pleased that we will know, because I think people have the sense that we could run Hellgate High School off of solar panels. And I think that, that just, if the kids could know how much, you know, the knowing, what fraction we're actually producing using solar, I think it's hugely educational, because in the end, it's, it's always conservation wins. When you're penciling anything out, if you can reduce your electric usage, it so outweighs the benefit of solar. So I don't want to, I don't mind that we don't get the money, I'm pleased that the kids will get a realistic idea of what solar can do.
Other comments on the motion? Oh, Trustee Duggar?
I guess, yeah, and I agree with everything you just said on the short term, and I think the educational purpose is wonderful. And I guess I have a broader concern about the end game, and how that, I realize the power company's going to spend a million dollars on this, but at the end of the, of the day, what, who's going to benefit from that million-dollar investment? And that, that's my ultimate question.
Unfortunately, we're at the point where it's, it's trustee comments now, and then public comment, and then we'll vote on the motion. So any other trustee comments? Seeing none, then there's public comment. If you have public comment, this is an appropriate time to make it, if you'd like. Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none, then all those trustees in favor of the motion to approve the execution of the lease and the MOU in the form attached to our agenda with the corrections that have been made, made tonight, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is all trustees except Trustee Duggar. All those opposed? Trustee Duggar. So the motion passes. And then we move on to item number three, which is to approve property and liability insurance for a three-year commitment. That, there are documents in support of this on page 35, so Pat, if you want to provide the background information, or explain the background information we already have.
You bet. So we are a member of a pool insurance program with a large number of school districts throughout the state, and essentially what the insurance program is attempting to do is obtain commitments from school districts that they can use when they negotiate rates with, with carriers, because the pool plan covers our property liability insurance up to a point, and then we have excess coverage that's provided by carriers. So the benefit to the district is it provides a certainty for budgeting purposes in terms of caps on increases in insurance. Page 35 reflects the commitment to, to, to the program for three years, and I see it references an extra two.
Twenty thousand years.
Long time. So it's actually a three-year commitment. And the, the rate cap is a 6%. For our purposes, they've operated with us, they meaning the insurance program, as if we were under this commitment the last three years, and have kept our rates consistent with the, the property liability insurance program. And our rates have been really between 5 and 6% over the past six years. And a further benefit to the program, in particular at this point in time, is, is we have a number of building projects, you all know, going, as you all know, that are going on. And the program itself provides building risks, builder's risk insurance. This is coverage for the, during construction, and that's something that probably saves us about $100,000 per year. So we're recommending we continue with, with the program, and that the board support the three-year commitment.
Any questions for Pat? Trustee Lorenzen?
I guess I'm just wondering what this organization is. Is it under OPI, or is it under MTSBA, or what is it?
It's not under either, and so how it was, was formed, I'm not really sure the underlying entity that formed it. It's a, in Montana Schools Property Liability Insurance Program, they compete with a program that is offered through MTSBA that, that came into existence about 10 years ago, or less than 10 years ago. The, we looked at it at that time, and, and we had an insurance expert sort of compare the different programs, and recommended we continue with this program, partly based upon the, the level of participation by schools around the state, and, and then the coverage offerings. So it's, it's, it's probably, you know, something that we would evaluate again at some point in time, but from a property liability insurance program standpoint, I would venture to guess that the bulk of the school districts around the state are with this program or with the MTSBA program.
Any other questions? Trustee Newbold?
Pat, how does this work with the not to exceed 6% in any one year? Do we have any negotiating ability with that, or because it's sort of a pooled system, is that just sort of, this is your not to exceed rate, and that's the end of it?
Yeah, it's, we do have a little bit of that. We actually have a local agent that represents us at Payne West Insurance, and so Dave Montelius negotiates on our behalf those rates. It's a claims-based sort of rate increase or rate assessment. So as a school district, if you experience a large number of claims, you might experience a larger increase in that rate. And, and so the rate lock sort of covers the peaks and valleys a little better. The program itself is managed by Board of Directors, much like it would be through a pool insurance program, through MTSBA. And, and those rates are established through that Board of Directors, which consists of a number of school district officials from around the state. But locally, you know, we have property liability insurance rate increases that are tied to increases in property values that are unrelated to the rate increases that you see here. And so we've experienced some increases in insurance premium, really the last five years, with the level of projects we're completing. And we've, we've probably not been great from a claim standpoint, I would say, the last couple of years. We've had better years, so this is probably a good year for us to jump on the three years, just given a real recent claims history.
Any other questions? I think you might have answered it, but is this something that we've entered into, continuing three-year agreements each year? I mean, when did we start having a relationship with this group? And is it always renewed in three-year increments?
So the three-year offering came about three years ago, and we sort of hedged our bet then a little bit and said, yeah, we'll do it, but we want an out. And this time, they said, you don't get an out. So either you're committed or you're not. And, and so I think the three-year commitment is probably, this is the second, second series of that. In terms of how long we've been with them, I would guess 20-plus years.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then the recommendation is that we approve the three-year commitment. Is that a legal term of art? It seems kind of odd.
It's all the inscribed, isn't it?
Okay. The three-year commitment with Montana Schools Property and Liability Insurance Plan, is there such a motion? Moved by Trustee Lorenzen, and seconded by Trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion? I just wanted to say thank you for doing due diligence, or whoever did due diligence in comparing the two, you know, the available options, I want at least three to five or some years ago. So thank you for doing that. Any other board comments? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of the motion to approve the three-year commitment with MSPLIP, another acronym? Please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to trustees present. Then we move on to the, excuse me, recommendation that the trustees authorize the engagement of Jackson Contractor Group to act as the general contractor, construction manager for the CS Porter Middle School Construction and Renovation Program. And I feel like we should somehow, although we can't do it, bring out some champagne. This is a pretty monumental decision that the board is making in one sense. And so Burley, do you want to provide background on this? Although I think, with the exception of our new trustee, you know, we understand generally what the process is, but for everyone who might be watching on TV who is not familiar with the process, could you run through it briefly in terms of the selection process?
Yeah, sure, thanks. So we originally put out a request for qualifications, or RFQ, one of those acronyms that we've been hearing a little bit about tonight. We put that out to a local newspaper, and we, we take those responses from those RFQs, and we, we do a qualification on them. We do a pass/fail, whether or not they're qualified to, to do the kind of work that we're looking for, as well as to perform the alternative project delivery, which is the GCCM project, or process. Those that qualify, we send a request for proposal, which we require them to put in that proposal their approach to the project, their experience in public work, in working with subcontractors. And then we also ask them to put a price on, on the project as well, for, on their part. We take those two, and we score them, and we invite up to four of those companies back for interviews. In this case, we invited four companies back for interviews. We then, then score those out, and when you combine the interview with the RFP approach and the RFP price, it's a total of 300 points. And the company that scores the highest points, the committee selects. In this case, Jackson Contractor Group was selected for Porter Middle Schools Project, which we're very excited. We've worked with both Mark Kobos, who's here tonight from Jackson, on Franklin and Hellgate, along with the superintendent they proposed, who is currently working on the Hellgate project, and then the project manager worked on the Franklin projects. We've, it's kind of a crew that we've worked with, and we're, we're excited for that. The committee, as we heard a little bit from Mr. Holtain tonight, is quite kind consuming, so I always like to make sure I identify those folks. That was Superintendent Thane, Pat McHugh, David Rot, and Principal Lisa Hendricks. So be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Or we entertain a motion? Trustee Newbold?
Can you just remind us about the scope of this project for Porter?
Yeah, it's, it's, there's some remodel to the music and choir rooms to make them bigger and, and kind of cluster them together. It's very similar to a lot of other projects. We've had a lot of, a lot of fine arts work in our Bond project. And then there will be some classroom renovations, some HVAC upgrades. We've already did some roof work over there, so we did some, a lot of deferred maintenance. Right now, they're in schematics, which is a concept, it's really early. So as I've kind of explained to the board, we decided to bring the general contractors on much earlier, these last two projects, to kind of help through that design phase. The, the current project, they're looking at also relocating the main entry to, to the northwest corner of the building. So we'll be presenting that probably to the board in August, we're hoping. But again, we had a meeting today, and there's, there's still a lot of work to be done yet, so we're not quite ready to show it to the community or have a public meeting just yet.
Any other questions for Burley? Seeing none, then is there a motion? Oh, this is an elementary-only action item, so is there a motion from an elementary trustee that the trustees authorize the engagement of Jackson Contractor Group to act as the general contractor, construction manager for the CS Porter Middle School Construction and Renovation Project? Moved by Trustee Lorenzen, and seconded by Trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? I'll just say, thank you for, to everyone, as, you know, the Holtain crowd has said, for all the hard work that's gone into the multiple projects, and it's really nice to see that this is the last one we're approving, not that it's the last project to be completed by far, but thank you. Is there any public comment, or any other board comment? Any public comment? Thanks for being here. So seeing no public comment, then all trust, elementary trustees in favor of the motion to authorize the engagement of Jackson Contractor Group to act as the GCCM for the CS Porter Middle School Construction and Renovation Project, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to the four elementary trustees present. Then we move on to BE1, which is to approve the personnel report that is on, beginning on page 36. Dave, is there anything you want to point out on that report?
It's a typical report, but there are two minor corrections that need to be made. On page 38 of the report, under the change of assignment slash hours on Mike Christiansen, where it says from three hours per day, below that, that whole line, administrative, eight hours, that whole line should be deleted. And what it should have said is just rattlesnake. So what's occurring is three hours to two hours at rattlesnake for, for that position. And the other error was on page 39, under extra duty hires, Jason Ferrer. It says head football, it's actually wrestling.
Did all trustees get those changes? Any questions for Dave? Trustee Lorenzen?
So are we all full on our principal positions? Is everybody hired?
We still have an assistant principal position at Big Sky High School, and that's going to start taking place on the 16th.
Any other questions? Seeing none.